Begin our October 4th Policy Committee meeting. And it is great to have everybody here. It's nice to be in person. And I also just apologize for not being available in September. I was 8,500 feet in the mountains at my daughter's camp. So we didn't have even internet very well. So glad to be here. And we have quite a few things on the agenda for our meeting. And the first one is we don't have any policies for the first reading. We do have a policy for the second reading. And it's 555 service animals in the school. And you may remember back in May, we started the review on this as well. And so we really appreciate Jason Crane here to help walk us through this policy as well. Assistant Superintendent Bonds, were you going to lead or Jason? Okay, okay, turn it over to Jason then for the second review of the service animals in the schools.
Thank you, members of the board. If you remember, just part of that request when we met in May or June, it was one of those two months. I'm not sure if it's been some time since we talked. One of the requests was because there were red lines on that copy. The question came is should we be redlining those sections? And the request was to go back to the Minnesota School Board Association. I did that as well as contacted our attorney, Amy Mace. And both organizations says districts have a right. These are policy guidance documents for districts to consider using. And you could amend them to meet your district needs. So what you see before you today in today's board meeting is it amended. The red lines are off, but those sections that were taken out reference a form to be used in addition to the requirements of having 504 or IEP team meetings to determine the use of the service animal in school. So there's basically certain things you can ask and under section three, I believe, or is it four?
Four.
Are there two items that you can ask? I'd just like to read those just for the record today. And that those two things are, did you say four?
Four B.
So is the service animal required because of a disability? And number two, what work or task is the service animal trained to perform? And we've had a situation at a school last year where we went through the steps in the process, just like they're outlining this policy, and it went rather well. And we developed the specific language added to the IEP. And the service animal was used in the school last spring. And my summary of that, it went really well. Not only the relationship with the service animal, providing support for the child, but the relationship with the family. And that family has attended some of our school board meetings. We've heard from that parent. And this is a reflection on how this policy was implemented. And it's not yet a policy that we're using. And it's here before you today, the second reading. Any questions for me? Pause and just let you ask, an opportunity to ask questions.
No, I just appreciate the update on the parent too. I remember when we spoke at our, I think it was our May 19th meeting. So I have gone back and reviewed that. It sounds like the policy is addressing some of her concerns that she had.
I don't want to speak for her, but I'm sure she'd be willing to come back and provide an update. But she, as well as others, are anxious to see this policy brought forward by our district, so. This is rare. We had one last year. We've had others in the past, but I don't want to give an exact percentage, but it's typically one or two a year for consideration. As I stated earlier, last year was related to a student with disabilities that had IED supports. We've had 504 requests in the past as well. It's rare. Dogs. We've only had dogs in Duluth schools. I've heard other districts that have had rabbits and ponies and things, but we haven't had that in Duluth. On an individual basis, I'm sure Mr. Bonds is, yes.
Although we do not allow for dog handling shows.
But that could happen after next Fall's event.
I had one more question. On section X2 and 2 for liability, is there, do, so it's on them if something were to happen? Do we ask for insurance policies? We don't have to do that?
We don't ask some of those tough questions, and thank you for bringing that up. But it's similar to if you were to use a parking stall in a Walmart parking lot that's handicap accessible, and you don't have the privilege or the documentation necessary to be using that. You could be subject to liability, criminal charges in some of these cases if you were to misappropriate the use of a service animal in schools.
Thank you. Another question that made me think, are we required to put signage up at schools? I know at least one of our schools that I noticed to sign up about on the service animals.
Being used?
Yeah.
That's a great recommendation. It's not a requirement. It's not stated in our policy.
Okay, okay.
But that would be part of our accommodations. For example, if a student had an allergic allergy situation for a service animal to be used in a classroom, we would work to support that individual student. And whatever needs arise because of that service animal being in a specific location.
I have one more question, I guess. Just out of curiosity, in thinking about animals in schools, particularly elementary schools, has it been pretty easy to kind of onboard the other students too with the animals? And teach them how they can or can't interact with the animals?
Well, that would be a question for some of our sites, actually. I don't want to use the word easy.
Yeah, maybe that's the wrong.
We've overcome some of the challenges. And in some ways, it's been somewhat exciting for the kids. But I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth to say that it was easy.
Good point. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up. I know we did discuss kind of training at school sites when we first talked about this. So thank you for that follow-up. Anybody else?
So in this version, then, you've eliminated the form.
Yeah, this version took out the use of the form, which I referenced in May. I said it sounds more like a proven situation that districts, and I have research on this, that shows districts have lost when parents have challenged the use of the form. So I think it's a good recommendation to not use the form. We have eloquent ways of documenting these things through the 504 and IEP process.
Okay, any other question?
Thanks for giving me a few minutes.
Thank you so much again for your work on getting our questions answered from the last time we reviewed this, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next section, our policies for review. And as we've been talking this year in the Policy Committee, that we wanted to start kind of bringing some groups of policies where we can together and review them. And so this, and again, there's, as we've reviewed in the past, there's a number of series of policies. And so this is 100 series. And there are policies that fall under school district. And so the first one is Policy 101, the legal status of the school district. And the last time this was reviewed was in 2016. So we're reviewing it. And Superintendent Magus or Assistant Superintendent Bonds, is there anything you would like to state in this one?
Well, I'd like to state that this is kind of one of the grounding policies of a district to formally recognize it as an entity with legal status. And I think that when you read the purpose, it kind of speaks to the weight of our responsibility as a board as we set on the stage today. It says, "A primary principle of this nation is that public welfare demands an educated and informed citizenry. Our to provide for public education is a state function vested in the state legislature and delegated to local school districts." The purpose of this policy is to clarify the legal status of the school district. So it's really establishing individual districts and saying that as a school board, we are a legal entity. And then it further outlines the way that that operates. You know, there's a general statement on policy. And it talks about how the school district operates with other entities. And then what are the powers of the school district, including areas of fund usage in general with taxing and things like that, raising funds, and then selling and buying a property, entering into contracts, adopting textbooks and other materials, and engaging in any actions and suits where that's not the nicest thing to end on, but we can sue and be sued is part of the guidelines defined. So basically, it's a relatively boilerplate policy that all schools have a place for it. So we are.
And I would just add, section three talks about our relationship to other entities and kind of lays out county and municipalities and more for informational purposes that we are involved as board members in an intergovernmental committee with city counselors and county commissioners. And I and David Kirby serve on that this year. And so we discuss lots of things so that we are informing each other of different things going on in the different bodies. But I liked how they touched on the relationship to other entities more from a legal perspective. But, and I know as a school district, we work in lots of different ways with the city and the county on lots of different levels. So, but I thought that was an important piece as well, so.
As slight connect, but connected aside to that, I know that we have a legislative draft platform that we put together each year. And we are sharing some of the preliminary ideas for that with the Duluth Days. There's a Duluth Days planning event on Wednesday. But our intention is after the elections in November, we want to come back to the school board during the committee of goal. Jeff Anderson has worked with us and come to share. We would share a draft of the legislative platform, what we're thinking, well, in advance of that meeting and allow for board members to think about, you know, what they'd like included from that draft or what they might like to change. And so that will be taking place in December as.
Yeah, and thank you for bringing that up. And that's what we, that's the process that we've been using for years in terms of having this connection with St. Louis County and Duluth Days, as well as kind of the steps for some introductions at that meeting coming up, as well as then in December, generally looking at our legislative platform. So thank you for adding that. Any other questions on 101, legal status of the school district?
So in our process of going through X number of policies annually, are we going to include in this format or this committee? Do you need policies in this committee? Kind of just check them off for a bit, obviously, or document it? That kind of procedure, we going forward to try to achieve that other goal of 25% annually?
Yeah, we were looking at 25% annually. So going through, some policies might require more work, like Policy 103 that's coming up in a little bit here. We have some differences between the MSBA model policy and what we include. And I think we might want to take some time to maybe bring them back for some future recommendations as well.
And so we might not in the series, like the 100 series, there's actually one, two, three, four, five, at least six policies. We're not looking at all of them right now because some of them still need a little bit more work before bringing them. And again, you know, that's our administrative staff doing that work, so.
And then we don't have to go for the first reading and second reading if we're not making changes to that privacy, to that kind of the approach?
We do still need to go through a first reading and a second reading, but we might not have to spend as much time.
And then policy for review?
And since this is a new process, I think we can, I think we just probably can speak great conversation, actually, right? In terms of like, since this one, for example, if it doesn't require any changes and we've reviewed it, can this be considered the first read? Is that something that we could as a committee?
I thought our policies on policies said they needed two readings, but even with a review, we can check on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also kind of tie this in with what we previously decided. And again, to me, it just makes more sense that if we, in doing what we're doing here today and then going through what we do in this committee goes through board approval later in the month, we reviewed this document and say, okay, we can move forward on this. There's no need to change it.
Right. I think the question is too, do we, I mean, I think we can share at the board meeting that we've reviewed these policies, but did they require a formal first read, second read? And if it's only under review, I think that's something we can clarify between down and board.
Yeah, well, and that was part of the discussion we had on that other policy that we just approved at the last quarter with those changes to check off 25% of the annuals.
Right. But the, or and the procedure for once it's reviewed, whether it needs to be go through the reading or not at the board meeting? That's the only thing I have a question. I'm not opposed to it. We can do that. Maybe it's best practice for us to do that, to say, we reviewed these policies and give a quick synopsis of each one. That would not be a problem.
Yeah, I think I'd want to double check that just based on the policy we just adopted, as well as that the idea of the two reviews is also so the public has a chance to learn about the policies as well. So there's that kind of public piece of it. So, but we can, we can double check that, but that's my understanding, so.
So for now, we're saying this policy they will move forward for first reading at the next policy committee?
Unless we get a clarification, yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, the next one for review then is Policy 101.1, the name of the school district.
Which I'll take, gladly take because.
Go ahead.
This is probably one of the quickest and simplest policies because it just affirms, it confirms this school district's name as being in public schools. And so I guess this is one of those really easy options to board asking.
And my only additional comment on that is I appreciated in the general statement of the policy how it added, in order to avoid confusion and to encourage consistency in school district letterhead signage, publications, other materials, that we as a school board establish a uniform name of the school district and that we're consistent with that.
I agree, being relatively, I can't say relatively new to the state much longer, but relatively new to the state. When everybody refers to each district by its ISD number, it's hard for me to know the difference between ISD 283 and ISD 197, right? So I think it's helpful for us to identify it as Duluth Public Schools. This also helps us with our web searches because if you search Duluth Public Schools or Duluth Schools under Google, because we were using ISD 709 more prominently previously, it wouldn't always bring up Duluth Public Schools first. It would bring up other entities. And so by naming us in this manner, it helps us with clarity related to media marketing and communication.
So Duluth Public Schools, Joe? Okay. Okay, the next one then, unless, any other comments? Okay, here's 103, and this is complaints, students, employees, parents, and other persons.
Yes, I'll take that one because this is a complaint policies. And the vast majority of complaints come through the Assistant Superintendent's office. And this is one of those that is updated pretty much annually. And as you can see, the last update took place August 17th of 2021. As a matter of fact, we also had a revised it in October 4th of 2022. And the revision probably at that point in time was to clarify the name. So this is the, one of the policies that requires a specific name in it. So as you see on section eight, dissemination policy identifies the Title IX Coordinator. And I serve as the District's Title IX Coordinator for the districts. So my name must appear in this policy. And so anytime there's an update or someone else assumes a role, their name would have to be right here.
Thank you. Any questions or additional comments?
So this would be somewhat different than the 101, 101.1, because we're actually changing the content of the messaging. One thing I was wondering about is, let's see, under section two, point C, the general statement of policy, it says, "The appropriate administrator shall respond in the same communication method as the complaint was received to the communicating partner or communicating party concerning the outcome of the investigation, follow-up, et cetera." I'm wondering if we would want to state something, "shall respond in writing or in the same communication method as the complaint received?" Because let's say there is a phone call about something really serious, and we want to make sure it's documented in writing. We might, I think, write, the MSBA policy specifically says, "will respond in writing." And if our policy is allowing us to respond in the man, I think it's good for us to have the option of responding in the manner received. So if you get a phone call about a complaint, you can follow up with a phone call. But I think it's good for us to have a little bit of flexibility there. If we get an email about something and it's sensitive and we want to follow up with the person as a phone call, that's okay. If we get a phone call about something we want to follow up in writing, I think that would be appropriate. So I think it could along with a little flexibility in how we follow up might be.
Which item was that again?
That was.
Two C, okay. The other thing I was going to mention that is different in this is under three grievance procedures or complaints, C, it, the school board hereby designates trees of severance as a school district human rights officer. So that is also a name change in this.
That's correct.
And I think to go off of what you were talking about Superintendent Magus for two C, I mean, I can think of another situation, right? If someone calls you with a complaint or concern, but then maybe their phone gets shut off or something. You can't get ahold of them that way.
Right.
Just leaving yourself or a district, you know, more opportunities for getting in touch with them.
Right. I don't think people would be necessarily upset like if we responded in writing rather than in the manner received. But I would need for us to set us up to kind of inadvertently violate the policy because we didn't allow for some flexibility again.
So what do you, how do you want to change it?
I think I would like to change it to, "the appropriate administrator shall respond in writing or in the same communication method that complaint was received." Or we, what are your thoughts? Mr. Bonds, your secretary.
I think that clarifying that it is covered in case it is a phone call. So that's covered and given flexibility. As you know, in practice, they get moved, right? So that's why for me, it's like when they get moved anyway, even if our policy doesn't say it.
I'm just envisioning if there's a serious complaint about something from an HR standpoint, it's a phone call that comes to you, you're still going to want to respond in writing.
Absolutely.
So that's where I want us covered.
So Patty, do you have that for, and will you put it in red when it reappears? Okay. Yeah, highlighted, yeah.
And so then we're going to do a first reading on this next month and then a second reading in December? Because we're going to change this here.
Yes. Any other comments or questions on 103? And again, on 103, there's some additional ones that will be brought forward. The next section is on regulations. And this is again more for informational and it's Regulation 620R, Credit for Learning, Students Experiencing Homelessness and Foster Youth. And let me use this opportunity to welcome Lisa Larson with us, who is our new Families in Transition Director and Coordinator. And it's great to have you in this new role. You bring a lot of great experience in your former role with our district as well, so thank you.
May I ask for a quick pause to go back to the previous policy? I just want to make one thing articulated. Section seven talks about retaliation and talks about how there will be no retaliation for complaints. And the reason why I bring that out is because sometimes we've heard, you know, people are afraid to bring up a concern or the concern about retaliation. But I just wanted to make sure that we were clear for us as a board and for the public as well, that retaliation based on a concern or complaint brought up is, it has been and will continue to be something that we don't recommend here. Sorry, I didn't mean to steal your thunder, but we're super thrilled.
Thank you.
Sure.
And we also have our Director of Secondary with us. This is Jen Larva. And I guess they both will be presenting policy for extra information.
Yeah, thank you. So poor Lisa jumped into this role after a lot of work had already been done on this regulation. So it wouldn't be fair to her to just be like, hey, present this one all on your own because, you know, a lot of work was done when Katie Danielson was here. So Katie Danielson really started this work pre-COVID. So there had been conversations way back in 2019 about ensuring that when students are experiencing homelessness, that they're getting credit for the courses that they have been able to complete, no matter where they're coming from, and trying to get them on that pathway towards graduation. And giving them that, that credit in such a way that they might be getting partial credits instead of like you earn a full credit for this class. They might be just getting a quarter of a credit for the amount of time that they've been there. So that's what the purpose behind this regulation was. It is tied to our policy 620, which is Credit for Learning. But this is specifically for our students experiencing homelessness and fostering youth. So we do have students that sometimes are having some gaps in their education due to their situation of their, their status of where they're living at the time. This regulation, we're, we're through. Katie Danielson did a lot of the research piece around it, had consulted with Minneapolis and St. Paul Public School Districts and some other school districts in the area. She's taught, she was tied to some organizations where she was able to get some sample policies and look at them. We have specified the McKinney-Vento Act here so that you get some background as to why this is an important policy for us to have. We also identified which students, you know, this is following covering, which would be those homelessness and fostering youth. And then the high school counselors and the staff that work in our counseling offices are the ones that really should be working with our Families in Transition Coordinator, which is now Lisa, with any enrollment questions that may be coming up regarding to this policy. The counselors have reviewed this. We went through a process last year, put a draft together, walked it through with all of our counselors. And during a counselor meeting, we walked it through with administration, the principals at the sites, at the buildings. Our content specialists also reviewed this during one of our content specialist meetings last year. This one got kind of put on hold because there was some question around, is this a regulation? Is this an administrative? Is this an administrative guideline? Is that what we call administrative? So there had been some questions. So this one was ready to go way last spring, but there were some questions about how we wanted to handle it. So we decided just to move it forward as a regulation, knowing that that it was ready to go. I think that, you know, there might be a few pieces that Lisa might have a different perspective on coming into this as a new role that, you know, she may be reviewing and we may have further conversations around. But this is where we we ended with the conversations and what we determined would be needed for our students. You will see that there are some guidelines about enrollment periods. So, you know, how much of a credit do they get if they're enrolled in one of our semester courses for the first 10 days of the quarter, they're going to get, you know, full credit for that. Even if they've missed the first nine days, they enroll on that 10th day, we're giving them that full first credit. So. There's some guidance there and then some considerations that we've really talked through with the guidance counselors, trying to make sure that we're giving as much credit to students as we possibly can depending upon when they enroll in our courses and when they are leaving our courses as well. And then some of that unfinished coursework, so making sure that at the end, you know, that teachers are able to use that comment, like subject to change and be able to make those adjustments for students as we need to after the graduating period happens. So. There's some communication pieces in there as well, like who's responsible for communication, things are communicated. I don't know if there's any questions that you had after reviewing it? Been a while since I've worked on it, so I have to go back in my memory bank to see where that came from.
No, I recall you saying just the amount of review that happened with our staff that are actually implementing this and doing the work and really appreciate all those conversations and meetings that happened. This isn't a question, but just for people's kind of background information, the McKinney-Vento Act was passed in 1987 and there's lots of information if you want to learn more about the the act itself and when it was passed and kind of some of the history around it. So 1987.
You know, Lisa, if you have anything else that you wanted to add, I know you actively work on the policy, but not at this point.
You kind of answered one of my questions already because I read in there it said, I think it was maybe that staff are encouraged to connect with the families in transition coordinator. I was kind of wondering why it wasn't required for staff to connect youth with the families in transitions coordinator. But after kind of hearing how many people have reviewed this, that all of our counselors and other staff have and they've had so much input, that makes more sense to me now. And I also just wanted to say just how grateful I am to all the work of the counselors in our schools working with youth who are experiencing transition. I know that they do an amazing job at, you know, collecting those records and offering as much flexibility as possible. That's really important.
And they work really hard for all students, make sure that students are getting credit. We just wanted to make sure that we were specifying those students that are experiencing homelessness and fostering youth. You know, that that is that is definitely one more barrier in terms of education. We wanted to make sure that it was clearly stated somewhere how we were going to be approaching that.
Yeah, more barriers.
Trying to reduce barriers.
More schools to contact sometimes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I know I just appreciate it, the work I do is with kids in foster care who are moving all over the district sometimes and see how this plays out in that work as well as the transportation end of students in foster care and that are homeless.
Lisa, I want to put you on the spot, but do you want to share any perspective regarding, you know, your impression right now or what you and your team are dealing with with regards to students experiencing transition?
Sure. So as I've been getting to know the role and understanding different things about it, have come to find that failing to graduate from high school is one of the biggest reasons that the cycle of homelessness continues. And so this is super important to give kids who may have holes in their high school years a little bit of a break in regards to the credits. So we have two fit staff at elementary schools, both at Condon and Myers. And then we have a half-time fit staff contracted person who works with middle and high school students. And just today I finished a grant and turned that in in hopes of being able to hire some more fit staff for the secondary level because that's that's the level where most unaccompanied youth are and tend to need those support. So.
Thank you, Peter. If I could, I'd just like to say thank you for for coming on board to lead this very important work. We really value and recognize our sincere obligation to serve each student well. And I think students who are in transition and students in foster care sometimes are at greater risk of not being served as well as we hope. And I would say, I actually brought up because this this policy has some deeper specific guidelines to it and we've tried to move away from being specific with guidelines and getting to more streamlined policy. But I think in this, we had a conversation that particularly with this where sometimes if it's left in a gray area, maybe it's not as fully supported universally by everybody, we felt like it was more important to leave this specific information in to keep it keep it tight to what is required, just because we want to make sure that that obligation and responsibility of serving those kids is completely honored by the district.
I would also add that Katie, over the years, would come and present to the school board. And I think many of us in my my years on the board just always really appreciate, I think it was usually towards the end of the year and just the information she provided on how you met different needs and in the in the district kind of a year summary kind of thing. So we look forward to that at some point.
Sure.
Yeah. Any other comments on this regulation, policy?
I just want to say from past experience, this is a tough one to talk about as a former committee. Because, you know, I I recognize the challenges here and certainly have always been thankful for our counselors and our support staff that work with our students. It just seems like as a, you know, an urban district with lots of families in transition, we've always had to deal with the issues year in, year out, and sometimes it seems like the numbers keep growing. That's worrisome. I thank you for taking that role. We support everything we're trying to do here because it's it's so necessary. And I did John's comment too, in where it says grading, you know, counselors use their professional judgment when issuing passes or non-pass grades. I mean, again, there is some flexibility there to help support these students in high schools earning credits to graduate. Hopefully we can provide the resources to help them succeed, whether it's within the high school systems at Central Denfeld or Eastern Denfeld and/or our ALC program too, which can offer support for these students.
Thank you so much. We look forward to learning more about your work in this new position.
And since you said that, I'll add that on a monthly basis, we do our teacher learning and equity newsletter. And so even in this month, Lisa has a piece in there talking about families in transition and the work that she's doing and, you know, making sure that our entire district receives information about all of the work that's happening there and how they can, you know, help us with students in transition to be aware of what they should do if they identify as families or students who are in transition, be sure they get in contact and the resources are available. So our teacher learning equity newsletter is a great resource to also receive all the information on key areas like this.
You know, I mentioned the transition or transportation piece and I think if I understand it right, through the McKinney-Vento Act, we're required to provide transportation no matter where kids are moving to and that. And so I think that's always important for us to be highlighting. I know I can't tell you how many people I've said that to and, you know, people aren't aware. And and when we think of all the different ways that we meet the needs of kids, you know, that's such a key one, definitely key for the kids I work with. But so. Look forward to reading that piece of the newsletter. Okay, anything else? Great. Well, we have about 10 minutes before our committee of the whole. So thank you all and we'll follow up with the earlier question about those two policies if they need a first and second reading, but I think that they might, but we'll we'll follow up. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
The meeting is adjourned and then we have 10 minutes before our committee of the whole meeting.